Okay, we'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge their flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Mon County Commission, and for the record, I'd like to note that all three commissioners are present. First, we'll have consent and approval from our county administrator, Renetta.
Morning. We have 14 exonerations for $4,492.74. Vouchers: General County Fund, $449,026.32. Magistrate Court, $259.20. 911, $923.50. Chestnut Ridge Park, $4,897.63. Transportation Levy, $31,971.01. Fire Levy, $77,026.04. Recreation Levy, $87,525.34. And Library Levy, $7,846.83. Assessor's Valuation, $1,028.36. And Payroll, $830.427.84. Purchasing Card Vouchers: General County Fund, $67,848.61. Magistrate Court, $29.84. 911, $157.07. Home Confinement, $5,005.24. Chestnut Ridge Park, $46.31. Assessor's Valuation, $180.47. For voucher total of $1,565,397.61. Position vacancies for boards and authorities will be listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for January 13, 2021.
Move to approval. Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We also have a letter that was received from Lou Scotchel, Sr., regarding Arthur P. Scotchel Estate. Somebody want to address that?
I reviewed that. The letter indicated that Mr. Scotchel wanted the results of the administrative hearing held back in October, I believe, to be vacated, in that there was not a written transcription from that hearing. We contacted the county attorney, and he indicated that he discovered there is an audio recording of that hearing which can be reviewed, that can be made available to Mr. Scotchel. It's not our purview at this time to overrule. We've already ruled on this estate and accepted the recommendations from the fiduciary commissioner. At this time, we're not in a position to overrule that. The appeal process from a hearing happens prior to that recommendation, and there's a procedure set forth for that. So at this time, the commission's not in a position to act on that request, and the prior approval that's been granted still stands.
Should we ask our attorney to respond to the letter to basically state that?
If that's what you all wished.
I think that would be advantageous, and they just put it as part of the record that we would just have our attorney respond to his concerns.
Okay. I can definitely ask Mr. Magr to respond.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Again.
Do we need any motion on that?
Sure, I move that we have the attorney, our attorney, Mr. Magr.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Suggestion passes unanimously.
Yeah.
Okay. Introduction to new employees, personnel changes. We don't have any on the agenda, there's no one in the room, so I assume we don't have any. Comments from the public. We will now open the meeting for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard must raise their hand, come forward and provide his or her name and address for the record. Please note, there will be limited to three minutes unless other time worn by the president.
I have my time, for sure.
Started.
And if you notice, the first meeting we had last week, every speaker went over, but again, we allowed deference to the speakers.
I am Ed Hawkins, 585 Easton Mill Road. I'm here simply to congratulate and to thank Mr. Bobby Doyle on his years of his service here for county commission. I don't think that I could ever have been half a commissioner that I could have been without his aid and assistance. He always answers our phone call, no matter what, and no matter what holds for him in the future, I want to wish him well and make sure that that's on public comment and public record. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone else, we'll close public comment session. Okay, Colleen Coon-Grants. Good morning.
Good morning. I have requests for reimbursement from the Governor's Highway Safety Program. The first one is impaired driving in the amount of $546.48. And the second one is safe communities in the amount of $1,147.94.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next is correspondence.
We have a few items. Last week, the assessor was here, Mark Muzik, and he alluded to a letter that would be coming from his office regarding the Montague County Redevelopment District Number Two, Morgantown Industrial Park Tiff, 2020 base assessed value. Glenn Adrian, who's a developer on record to the district, he had asked the assessor's office to certify the base of the real property and the personal property, and he has just given us letters indicating what those values are.
We see that a letter noted. Anything else?
We also received a letter in the mail from Deborah Hagadorn. She is currently sitting as a member on the director, I'm sorry, Deckers Creek Public Service District. She does not, she wants to vacate her post and let somebody else sit. She's been serving the district for 25 years, and I mean, I would, I think that we should probably send her a letter of thanks for serving for so long.
Move that we accept the resignation and also send a letter of appreciation.
Seconded.
Okay, to just to point a discussion, she did note in the letter that she will serve until she's replaced?
That's right.
Right.
Okay, so I just want to make that distinction, so we can post a position, and hopefully we won't, that position runs until 2025, so I think we should try to find a replacement or search for a replacement, but otherwise, she has agreed to serve until she's replaced. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Anything else, Renetta?
Yes. I have a request, and you can tell me to put it on the agenda if you would want to next week, a request from Judge Clodges. As a former judge, he would like to use courtroom number three for his forensics class in February and March and April. He also asked that the back deck parking could remain open until 7:00 p.m., and the front door of the Justice Center be reopened from 6:00 to 7:00. Gary White has already been, the court security administrator's already been copied on this letter, so I'm sure he's aware. I haven't received any objections from him regarding that. So I can put it on the agenda next week.
Yeah, put it on the agenda. It's something we've done every year.
Yeah, yeah, I don't see why.
I'm glad we're able, that's the whole purpose of the judicial building, to open up for situations like that.
Okay. That's all.
Tom, do you have any correspondence you want to note?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to unfinished business. We have no unfinished business, new business. To consider a technical evaluation of the bid received from Aqua Pool regarding RFP number 2020 MCC-CM001 in consideration to open subsequent cost proposal for evaluation. I had forwarded, I had forwarded the technical evaluations that we had, that were performed. When do we, you guys want to accept that?
Yeah, move to accept the evaluation for the Aqua Pool. They were exceptional.
Okay. You have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so the next part of the process is we'll go ahead, Jeff, if you can go ahead and open that up. We'll go ahead and open up the cost proposal. While he's doing that, I wanted to just expand on the technical evaluation. We did, our facilities director, Bobby Doyle, did a thorough review of the evaluation, and there was nothing out of line with what we had requested, so it was determined technically responsive. And we also reached out to references that were provided as we requested in the RFP. There were 25 references, and we reached out to 11 different projects, and out of those, I believe, eight responded, and there was four questions we asked. The questions were, how would you rate Aqua Pool's ability to demonstrate effective management over the overall effort? The average score out of a score of 10 would be nine point, was 9.6. How would you rate Aqua Pool's ability to maintain an open line of communication so the technical costs and schedule items were addressed appropriately? The score is 9.5 was the average. How would you rate Aqua Pool's ability to work with the organization, provide flexible, proactive, and effective solutions? 9.4 was the average score. And in general, how would you rate your overall satisfaction with the cost schedule and the finished product provided by Aqua Pool, and that was 9.6. So there was also a couple, I gave them the opportunity to provide additional comments. They said, I cannot speak, one vendor said, I cannot speak highly enough about Aqua Pool's installation to warranty coverage through repair work. They were very responsive and professional. I would give them nines across the board. They installed our pools in 2009, and we have continued a relationship with them. They know their products and their pool industry very well. You will be very pleased with the work and service. The other comment was, this is an easy one. Aqua Pool's is a 10 across the board. They recently completed a 480K contract for us with no issues on time and on budget. From the YDI perspective, they're an excellent contractor to work with. So there was absolutely no derogatory comments, which is unusual for in the construction industry, and when you're reaching out for references, you're usually going to get a couple, but, so I concur with the decision to move forth the evaluation, I mean, with the opening of the cost proposal. So the cost proposal was open, and the overall firm fixed price cost offer was $497,400. And the next step of the project, of the process, they did bid on some optional items, so there's a couple of things that need to be reviewed, but I think the next step to continue with the process is have this evaluate our facilities director, also conduct a cost reasonableness analysis, since we only have one bid, we don't have anything to compare against. So that will be the next step, if you guys are in agreement?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right. So we will proceed with that, the next step of the process. All right. Next item is consideration of appointments to the Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board.
We have two applicants, Seth Lumley from Blacksville and a Kathy Patterson from Burton. Both are interested in sitting on the board.
Do we have a motion to approve?
There's room for those members, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so moved that we accept the nomination.
Seconded.
Okay, and for a discussion standpoint, I was at the Mason Dixon Advisory Board meeting last week, and I did meet these two individuals, and I think they're more than qualified, so I think they'll be a good fit. So the, everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, vote passes unanimously. Okay. Consideration of requisition number 49 for University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount. Renetta?
There it is. We have a requisition, and this is for taxes, sales tax that was collected in the district for December, $425,974.45.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for discussion's sake, this is regular deposits into the stiff district, less the statutory lien and administrative fees. To consider requisition number 36 for the Morgantown Industrial Park Series 2017 A Phase II Project Fund.
The requisition is for $110,048.27. Those funds will be paid to Thrasher Group and Adrian Enterprises.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That should pass unanimously. Okay, is there anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Next agenda item is the reports from elected officials and/or other department supervisors.
Yeah, Jimmy.
Jimmy Smith?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd like to take this opportunity, since this is Bobby's last meeting here from the county commission, to publicly thank Bobby for over the many years I've been with the county now. Bobby has always been there to help us at Mecklenburg when we need it, but more specific in the last 10 months with dealing with the COVID in Montague County. You know, I told Bobby, I said, Bobby, we're getting a large shipment of PPE in. Bobby jumped up, he said, I've got a place for it. He cleared out a warehouse, he got heat and air conditioning into it, got new garage doors up. Anything we've needed during this event, Bobby's been there for us. We bother him on the weekends, we bother him in the evenings. We have need for fogging in our building. He makes it happen within 24 hours. We have people out fogging. So Bobby, publicly, I'd like to thank you, not just for the Office of Emergency Management, but for all the citizens of Mon County for what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle?
Well, I didn't expect all that today, you know. So, thank you, Ed, and thank you, Jimmy. I appreciate that. Now, I got a little bit I'd like to say. First, congratulations, Mr. Arnett. I told you, I told you in our cell that we did congratulations. I didn't get up last meeting to welcome you on to the commission board or nothing, so I'll do that publicly, like I told you I would.
Thanks, Bob.
But first, I'd like to thank the commissioners and the past commissioners here at the county. You know, I've had a good life here working for this county, and you all have been a big part of that, and thank you again. And also, I'd like to thank your staff, Renetta and Colleen, and the past ladies that were here for helping me on every day, on a daily basis that I needed. I could put contents in a letter, but you wouldn't have wanted to read it because working construction all your life, you don't want to read my writing, okay? So the girls helped me put it in a good way to put it down there so everybody could understand what we're doing, and I really appreciate that. And thank you to all the past and present elected officials for working with me to get to the point where we're at. I know every day was not easy, but we worked through them, and we'll move right on. I would like to thank the staff that got me to this point that I'm at now. Like I've always said, you surround yourself with good people, and they will make you look good, which that's happened in the 30 years that I've been here. Chris and his staff at the motor pool, Dana and her staff at the Canine Center, Tim, Jambi, and their staff at the litter control for keeping all this cleaned up around this county throughout these years. That's only happened probably for the last 10, 15 years, and that never happened before. Our cleaning staff, for all they do and have done, working every day through this pandemic of wiping everything off daily and keeping everything clean, so our buildings are not in a downpour of all this pandemic. Jeff and his IT staff, which I've only worked with for a short period of time, for helping start and continue to build this IT system that, I think, Sean, that was your idea, so this county's really moving forward with this IT program, and it's really going forward. Last but not least, the staff that surround me the most. Carlos, he's been with me 22 years on both of our crews.
Sorry.
I see these guys daily, and we're like a family. It's just not working together, but you know, it's, we talk every morning. The maintenance crews, which keep our buildings running on a daily basis, which is really important because they have to deal with everybody and keep everything moving. And a construction crew, which remodels old buildings and constructs new buildings, projects. Every year, I present the commission with the cost savings at the end of the year or the first of the year. So this year, I have some I want to pass out. And this year, there's 10 projects listed, and there are a few small ones that we did not put on there, and like Jimmy just said, we didn't put a big project down of insulating at the storage building over there, the garage doors and the HVAC in that, so there's more on this. And to explain to Commissioner Arnett, because he's never seen this before, I do a print out of all the big jobs that we do for a construction crew, what it would cost us. And how this, these, when you see these figures, you'll think that they're escalated a whole bunch, but they're not. We took these figures right off of a change order when we were doing the Justice Center. Commissioner Bloom and Commissioners Fekore have seen that, because I presented that, oh, it's been about six, seven years ago when I presented that form. So what I'm about ready to show you is what these guys did, and I'll pass these out. Put my mask back on. So the top one there is just the cover sheet on what both things cover, and you can look through them. And what we did, it's the health department, the gas line we put in for them at the airport, the extension service sidewalks, if you guys remember, we went out there and did those so we wouldn't have to have the contractor do them again. The work we did at the used service center for the kitchen out there, they bought a new kitchen, and we had to go redo everything so these cabinets would fit in there. The Chestnut Ridge warming hut restrooms, we redid, county clerk shelves, lights, and outlets over in the old wards building over there downstairs, so we made that so Kerry could have that whole basement. Health Department gas line, which everybody knows that was a big emergency, and these guys did that, I forgot, we did that in four or five days, and got the health department back up and running, because they actually shut the gas off in the health department.
It was freezing weather, too.
It was, it was really bad weather. We, we had to go, we bought a little pop-up tent, 10 by 20, so the guys could get out of the rain when we were digging and stuff. We built that forensics room down at the sheriff's office, which they really love. The dining hall, we just finished out at Mason Dixon, and the building in the back, which we didn't put on there. We built a brand-new IT building over at the River Road, tore that down, and I said I would never lay no more block, but Carlos made me do it. And then a new planning commission in the basement here. So comparing those projects, and they're right there, and this is what it cost us compared to what it would cost if we would bid them out, that crew this year saved $1,811,000. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention before I left, and I just, you know, make sure these guys get their credit.
Ken, this is very impressive, and again, these are savings numbers, these aren't cost numbers.
Right.
That's amazing.
I appreciate it, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Are there any other elected officials or department heads that would like to speak? So we'll move on to reports from county commissioners. Jeff? Generally, we rotate, so I didn't want to surprise you, and one day he'll go first and next day you do, because as Commissioner Hawkins used to say all the time, it's a curse to be last, because then you've got nothing to say. You don't have anything to report, go ahead. Tom?
Couple of quick ones. One, I do want to thank, personally thank Bobby Doyle for his service to our county and what he's done and meant for our community and the county commission. And I think it's actually just fitting that we talk about this in this room, because this room was from your group. And when people walk in here, it is clearly very impressive and just really shows the commitment that you had towards, and caring for the county. And I mean, and you can't ask enough about this, and then, I mean, there's so many different situations that we would call you very late at night or early morning, never complaining, you were out there, and I just want to personally thank you for that, and putting up with me, because I could be an SOB sometimes. Second, uh...
Did you mark that down, Ben?
Yeah.
He admits it.
Yeah, he agreed, that's a... Second, just so you know, I've asked Renetta to put on agenda next week, we want to do an update on the recycling, to give you what is going on and a general background. So we will have that on the agenda committee, or work session, why I keep saying, okay. Third, we have a food giveaway, just so you know, in, at the Mountaineer Mall on Saturday, and even though it's supposed to snow, we will still have it, so we're planning to have that. I do want to mention, and I think we just need to just put in the agenda, that we did lose an individual in the community, George Farmer. And I believe he was a tremendous person for this community, and I think we, as a county commission, just need to put that in the record, that we are sorry for his loss, you know, for the family's loss, and hopefully, you know, we really respect what he has done for this community. And finally, the last one, we had a teen court board meeting last night, and I want to clear that the teen court program, as of right now, has been put on hiatus, and since there's not enough funds to pay for the teen coordinator position, that individual will be laid off as of March 1, 2021, and there is no position at this time. And I just wanted that for the record. Thank you.
Since the last meeting, as far as meetings I've had, last Wednesday night, I had the Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board meeting. Thursday, I had a MAP Executive Committee meeting, and then Friday was chock full. We had staff reports, a project recovery task force meeting, conference call with Ann Erling out of the governor's office regarding a grant submittal that we had sent to the state. We had our broadband initiative meeting, and then we had a task, a task force call with Russ Rogerson in the evening, so it's a very long day. On Monday, we had a JUMA call, the JUMA, Jeff, that's a Joint Use Management Agreement. Those, it's, it's three entities from Island Park Foundation and three entities from WU that actually are the management arm of the Aquatic Center. So it's a group that was put together to manage that, the Aquatic Center. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow, I have another JUMA call, RED Team, and RED Team's the runway extension development. That's the, working on the city's airports runway extension, and then Development Authority in the afternoon. Friday, we have staff reports and the broadband initiative in the afternoon. In general, I'd like to make sure I point out that testing is still going on. It's not at the rec center, it's the Armory, because WU's gearing up for the beginning of their semester, so, and for the foreseeable future, it's this week and next week at least, and then if it changes, we'll make it, make people aware, but it's at the Armory from, on Monday and Friday, from 9:00 to 11:00. So it's important to get out and make sure that you still, if we can get people that haven't been tested, to test just as a community awareness and see if we can break the cycle of the people in our community that actually have it and don't even realize it and could be spreading it. The vaccination effort continues. Dr. Smith gave us some good reports yesterday on, he sent one article, I guess West Virginia's leading the state, leading the country in vaccination being accomplished per capita. And I think Mon County is leading the state on vaccinations per capita. I mean, we're, we're getting out what's given to us, and he has a pretty aggressive schedule, provided that we provide, we get the vaccinations. That's, that's the, the one unknown is we can plan as much as we want, but if the vaccinations don't show up when they're supposed to show up, then all the planning in the world does us no good. Bobby, I do want to appreciate, thank you for all your work. You're kind of the jack of all trades. You've been our eyes, our ears, our spokesperson. I haven't given much thought to you not being here, because I really didn't like the idea, and not sure what it will be like without you around to kind of take care of all the things that you take care of for the, for the commission, for the, for the county. I mean, when you work, you're working for us, but you're really working for the citizens. COVID's a perfect example. You've been on speed dial on every time we've had an outbreak and had to go somewhere and fumigate the building, we've, you know, weekends, any time of the night, we've been in touch with you, and you've gotten your crew out, or the vendors at the time, you had foresight... you had foresight to actually buy the equipment, that we were paying the vendors to fog these rooms when we had outbreaks, and now we have the equipment and we can do it ourselves at a much, much greater savings to our taxpayers, so budget time was always a fun time, because then that's when I really got to know how much, how much you really save this county and how much your footprint and your fingerprints are all over this county. One thing that I'd like to, and I'm not sure how we formalize this, but, you know, when our deputies retire, we let them keep their revolver. I asked Bobby what he wanted, and he had one request, that he, he be allowed to continue using our, our range, which he created. So it, it's my wish that Mr. Doyle be given lifetime access to our, the shooting range, which he created for our deputies, and state police use it, I think everybody, all the, public safety aspects in this county utilize it, and I, I don't know what we have to do to make that available, to make that happen, but I think if
Just make them
I have no problem with that.
You three commissioners agree?
We'll, we'll make it work.
We'll have to, we'll figure out a way to make sure that your key doesn't get, you know, always works.
Put it on the agenda next week and formally vote on it.
Yeah, yep, that's fine with me.
Yeah, that's
Renetta, go ahead and put it on the agenda. So, again, I don't know what, what I can say that hasn't been said already, you know, you've been, you bring stuff to us, even, even when it's tough, you know, it's not always, you know, it's not always good information, but the best, the best clients I've had are the ones that expect that I'm going to be, be honest with them and provide information and never have surprises. So, and you, when you're aware of something, you let us know, and, you know, I'm going to miss that, that communication and that, that comfort level that our county facilities are being taken care of, so really want to thank you for all that. We have, we have actually done a, a small certificate for you that the three commissioners and I would like to present to you. Says, "Montague County Commission presents this certificate of recognition to Robert E. Doyle to honor his and recognize his 30 years of outstanding service and dedication to the Montague County Commission, dated January 15, 2021, and signed," I took me three times to sign this this morning, Bobby, "by all three commissioners." So, meeting's over, we can go ahead and take a picture, but I'd like to go ahead and hand this to you.
We clap once?
Yeah.
That's the only time y'all hear us clapping for you.
Having said that, I don't have anything else.
Yeah, babe. Moved to adjourn?
Seconded.
We are adjourned.